Okay, it is seven twenty-one, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we are back from executive session with no action taken. And we will pick up where we left off on item number six point five. Discussion and possible action authorizing the city manager to repair and have published a request for proposals for financial depository services. Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor. That item up here. Uh, this is for, um, to authorize the city manager to prepare and pu- publish requests for proposals for a financial, uh, financial depository services. Um, as indicated in the summary, we've been with IBC Bank for, since two thousand and eleven, we've done a number of extensions. Um, and typically it's best practice to go out every five years for a, a new banking depository, or at least go out to bid. Um, in that best practice, it's only, uh, the idea to give a couple of extensions. And so, um, this has been on one of my, uh, to-do lists. Now, this is just to authorize myself, um, between myself and our financial consultant, Ms. Fiegans, and our treasurer, Councilman Gregory. We will be, um, finalizing the RFP before we send it out. And our goal is to, to issue this in mid, late May and bring something back hopefully by July to council.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council authorize the city manager to repair and have published a request for proposals, RFP, for financial depository services.
Thank you, sir. We have a second. Mr. Gregory, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. All right, number six point six, discussion and possible action ordinance, two thousand and twenty-one, four, zero, one, three, amendments to chapter eight, building and building regulations of the code of ordinances for the city of Castle Hills. Mr. Ismarone.
Good evening, council.
Uh, we were last presented with a presentation of chapter eight and everything that had been taken out of it. And now the proposal was to replace, uh, everything that was taken out of it at a previous time. And you have a red line version in front of you. Uh, I'd just like to reiterate that there are some areas of particular interest for code compliance and also for the permitting section, uh, specifically the conduct of construction, uh, which does show up on a permit but doesn't have teeth, as previously discussed. And putting that back into, uh, the code under chapter eight would give us the, those teeth once again. Also with the, uh, abandoned and dilapidated, uh, buildings, I think there might have been a little bit of change, but I'll address that a little bit later. Uh, and also the portable, temporary portable storage units, which do have a fee codified in our fee schedule. But there is actually, at present time, no statutory language requiring a permit for those. There's also other areas of chapter eight that I'm sure you gentlemen have seen, uh, that would be of some use, uh, to either one of those departments. And I'm available to answer any questions. Like I said, I think there was a little bit of a change and perhaps, Mr. Schnell, can discuss, um, change in language to the abandoned and dilapidated building part of that code.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, Mr., uh, Councilman Joyce, um, sent a question and, which was responded to and answered by Mr. Zamarone. And, um, the red line copy you have at the dais is those changes based on, uh, Councilman Joyce's request, um, prepared by Mr. Schnall.
Thank you, sir.
And again, I just wanted to make sure the idea behind this is cleaning up and improving, you know, the legal standing of chapter eight, which has been, of course, uh, well-needed over the last few years.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council, I'll, uh, entertain a motion whenever we have one available. Mr. Joyce.
I'll move that we approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash oh, four, dash, oh, one, three, amendments to chapter eight, building and building regulations of the code of ordinances for the city of Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Mr. Paul, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Gregory.
Good evening.
Sir.
I have three questions. Under section eight point eight one, we're allowing excavation and demolition of exterior alterations at eight AM on a Saturday morning?
Yes, sir. That's what's also printed on a permit and that's been in effect even prior to me getting here in two thousand and fourteen. Yes, sir.
That seems to me awfully early on a Saturday morning. I can see nine o'clock. Eight o'clock seems for demolition, eight o'clock in the morning.
I can't give an opinion to that, other than to tell you that there has been cases where that has actually happened, particularly on Glen Tower, that, uh, house that was razed to the ground. That demolition took place every day of the week except for Sunday.
Well, I just think the hours should change. I would move it from eight AM to nine AM. And I may make, uh, amendment to that effect. The next question I have is on section eight point one forty-four, wooden roofs prohibited. Are you grandfathered if you have a wooden roof right now?
So wooden roof, roofs? The answer to the question is it has to be. That's correct. Because you can't compel someone, a homeowner, to take on that additional charge of a new roof simply because it's been, for lack of a better term, outlawed current code. Uh, and I spoke to the building inspector before, uh, he quit and went on to another venture in his life about wooden roofs. And he said, uh, definitively that wooden roofs are outlawed even by the international code. So if a person has to replace a roof, then obviously you're going to have to come into current code, which is chapter eight, doesn't allow for wood roofs. And also would allow that person to come into compliance with international codes.
The last thing I was wondering, Matt, why do we even have eight point two eleven? Lawn sprinkler systems. Why does that have to be in the code as something to be regulated?
Uh, I did notice that today, and, and like I said in my previous, uh, presentation, there's probably a little bit of redundancy, uh, in chapter eight that would need to be vetted out on case by case, and this could be one of those areas. But it does have to be regulated. Sprinkler systems do have to go through a backflow inspection in order to not contaminate the water system. Uh, so this isn't really imposing anything above the international property code or building code standard of a required black backflow test.
Have we ever had that before?
Yes, sir. They, it, it, every time of, uh,
I mean, Castle Hills. Castle Hills has had this before.
Yes, sir. Uh, we still have that. It's, it's an international building code requirement. When a individual comes in for, or a contractor comes in for a sprinkler system, they're contracted and most of them know, some of them don't. We have a case where one may not know. They come in for their permit and they know that there has to be a backflow inspection.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce.
Yes, I'd like to, if I may, go back to, uh, Councilman Gregory's first question in section eight eighty-one. He was talking about paragraph B, and I think the ordinance as proposed may address his question. Because if I'm reading this right, it allows work preparation activities, uh, starting at eight to nine. And then from nine to four, actual work activities. So it distinguishes between preparation and actual work activities. And I would interpret the actual work activities to be the machines making all the noise, uh, holding them off till nine. Anyway, that's correct.
That's correct.
It's, well, it, because they're divided between Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday. I can agree with Monday through Fri- I just have a problem with the time. They specifically allow demolition at eight o'clock in the morning. Excavat- erection, exclamate- excavation and demolition of exterior alterations. That to me is, I mean, people expect after a hard week to be able to sleep until nine o'clock in the morning. And that's the only problem I have. I would just change it from eight AM to nine AM, and I'll propose a amendment to this at the appropriate time. Is this the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, or we finished, we haven't finished discussion?
Uh, let's finish discussion before we get into any amendments, Mr. Gregory. Do we have any more discussion?
I have a couple.
Mr. Paul.
I read it the same way Mr. Joyce did, and that is the preparation. And whether it be weekend or whenever it is, I don't see where it separates it. I think that the preparation from eight to nine and then your actual work, yeah, construction, explosion, whatever, it is set for nine o'clock. And I think that, uh, it is over by a time in the evening. So I read it the same way Mr. Joyce does. I don't see a problem with it. Second thing I had, it seems to me like I remember, let's take a wooden roof. You have a fire or you have a problem with the roof, hail, whatever. I thought that if it needs to be twenty-five percent, fifty percent replaced, that's when you have to replace it with something other than wooden, but you're allowed to repair up to a certain percentage with what's there. Am I correct, Louis?
That's correct, sir. Twenty-five percent or more is considered a replacement. Twenty-five percent or less is considered repair.
So that takes care of that issue already, then?
I think the ordinance refers to thirty percent.
Thirty? I knew it was twenty-five, thirty, somewhere in there, but it's already in the ordinance. And if it's beyond that, then we have to do it because this, I think this occurred back in the seventies, eighties, when we had some firecracker that actually landed on roofs and got them, uh, caught them on fire, wooden roofs.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Isbrand, any comments?
Uh, for what it's worth, regarding, uh, section eighty-eight there, I feel like we're going to rely on the city to explain what the ordinances are. And I doubt that contractors, coming from a contractor, is going to go into munich code and dig through the ordinances and determine when they can work. So I think as long as we can rely on the city, which I believe that we can, to articulate the way that the hours work, I don't see any need to get into the minutia.
And if I may add to that, the permit actually does articulate that hour prep time and that hour breakdown time. So it necessarily, um, brackets in the actual work time to those hours that Mr. Joyce discussed.
Thank you. Uh, do we have an action?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory.
I'll go back to the, how it defines work activity on a Saturday. This is work activity. This is not preparation. Work activity, you can have demolition, excavation of exterior alterations or repairs on any building. This is not preparation. This is actual demolition. So this is, this is not, they're just, you know, washing the car and cleaning off the hoses and this and the other. They can actually demolish something.
Sure.
And I repeat, I, I think eight o'clock on a Saturday morning is too early. I would like to make a motion that we, on section eight point eight one B, we change the hours, section B, from eight AM to nine AM to nine AM to nine. Uh, this is from eight or two. Uh, they eliminate eight AM and just say the restricted hours beginning at nine AM.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, I'll ask one more time. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Uh, would you like to start our discussion?
Um, I, I'd, I'd like to hear more of why we would see, um, Saturday different than the, what's in section A here. So, Mr. Gregory, maybe you could articulate a little bit more what your thought process is on this for us, please?
Well, section A is clear. Monday through Friday starts at seven AM, in which they can do all these various activities. They divide, obviously, the weekday versus the weekend on section B. And they, uh, commence these certain activities from seven AM to eight AM. And they specifically allow demolition. Now, during the weekend, most people have an expectation of being able to relax indoors to a reasonable hour, and nine AM is a reasonable hour. They don't expect to be woken up at eight o'clock in the morning by something as loud as a demolition. And that's why section A is permissible, because there is no expectation during the week, because everybody, a lot of, the expectation is people go to work and they're up before eight o'clock working. I don't think that expectation is true for a Saturday. And that's why I think Saturday should give people one more hour of rest. And that's why I would change this to nine AM.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments? Okay, and that's the case. We will vote on the amendment as presented by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? Opposed? Amendment fails, uh, three to two. Mr. Paul voted against it. Okay, we are back to the original item. Do we have a motion?
I believe there's already a motion.
I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. Fletcher. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. All in favor of the original motion as presented? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mrs. Ismarone.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on emergency communication notification system for the city of Castle Hills. Uh, I think we can all agree that Snowvid, as we experienced, presented a lot of opportunities for us to be able to do things better as a city and for our community. And one of the things that became apparent was that we do not have an efficient way to communicate with all residents in the city of Castle Hills. I know that Mr. Isbrand, our, our resident communications expert, uh, was sharing on all social media channels, as was I. But it became known to me that we weren't reaching some people. Some people do not use social media. Uh, that being said, I asked Mr. Rapley to explore an option to utilize a system that we could, uh, use calls, text messages, or emails, whichever the user prefers. And, uh, that is what we have in front of us. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this would be, um, through Alliance for Community Solutions. It's a intercooperative, uh, purchasing organization, similar to the Byboard, but it's, um, a part of ACOG. So since we are a part of ACOG, we can utilize this service. Um, Ms. Tedford has helped immensely on this. This is the same system they use in Chavino Park. Um, but the pro- the idea is that we will have to send out sort of postcards for people to register their phone calls. And there will be two licensees. One will be, uh, the fire chief and one will be Ms. Tedford. Uh, she's familiar with the system. She's already trained on the system. Uh, it's actually a savings of, uh, minor cost to the city for it. Um, and so if we have something related to emergency construction or a city-sponsored event, we can send out, uh, a call to people, a robo-call essentially, um, or a text message if they sign up. So the big push would be getting people who, um, just have landlines still, no cell phones, no texts, to get them to sign up. I know that the, there was a couple of people that called the mayor during that incident, said they don't do text message, social media, or website. And so this is an alternative. Um, this has been used in my last two cities. I actually still get phone calls about, um, all kinds of stuff in Brenham and Del Rio. Um, so I'm well aware of the system. It's, um, as long as people sign up, we get out the word. Um, it, it's a very useful system to notify people. Um, and at a low cost here, um, we're taking advantage of being a part of ACOG. Um, I think, is, Ms. Tedford, is there a gentleman on the line or he? Okay, if, if necessary, if you had any questions, we can get the gentleman. But, uh, if not, um, this is basically a system that we could utilize, like I said, similar to Chavino Park, to notify our residents right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Isbrand?
Um, Mayor, I'd, I'd move, uh, approval of the, uh, item, uh, to authorize the emergency community notification system purchases outlined in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. A second.
A second.
Joyce?
May I comment on this for a moment, Mayor?
Please.
It's, um, I, I think this is a remarkably effective and extremely cost-effective tool. In my work, we have thirty-five thousand people that we reach with a very similar type of system. And the fact that it addresses, uh, wireline phones, cell phones, texting, email, is a pretty comprehensive way to do this. When I looked at the price of this, I actually had to read this several times to make sure I was reading it correctly. I think this is a, a very smart move on the part of the city and one that's particularly needed, given the, the, uh, demographic range of residents we have here. That, yes, there are many who aren't on social media or don't go look at a website. I think this is a very good proposal, and I appreciate the work that's been brought forward.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rapley?
Oh, no, I was gonna say, thank, thank Councilman, and again, I have to lend myself to Ms. Tedford because she's familiar with the system. It would utilize the Chavino Park and, um, being able to be, um, one of the licensees, um, to utilize the system, help the fire chief, we should be able to get messages out quickly, especially if we have an emergency situation. Or, you know, even sending something out about Castle Hills Fiesta. As long as it's a city-sponsored event, we could utilize that system that way. I think ideally, we're looking at dividing up Castle Hills into ge- geographic zones, uh, especially if we have construction. We can notify people in that area that the road's closed or construction's going on. Um, and so we can, um, just send them a message and let them know. I think ideally, we'll send out some information or postcards, try to get people registered for the system. Um, because there's a process for registering them as well. So I appreciate it. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Joyce?
Oh, just a quick question. Uh, I, I realize this is geared toward emergencies, but is it limited to emergencies and official notices? How about events?
City-sponsored events.
Okay.
Like I said, for Fiesta Castle Hills, and I, she used it in Chavino, and it was, again, for emergency road construction or city-sponsored events. I'd have to caveat to say, we, you know, if there's an organization or something that wants to stick to city, uh, activities and sponsored events.
For what it's worth, I, I want to see if we could stratify that as well, because I'd hate for somebody to be inundated when they only cared about emergency events. But I, I feel like that would be an option for the postcards and a separate.
It actually is, Mayor. It has, you know, you have to select the city, which would be Castle Hills, and then what notices you'd like to receive. Emergencies are automatic for everybody, you know? Hurricanes, tornadoes, those go to everybody, but a, a citizen has the option to select city notices, um, bulk brush pickup, uh, road closure, those, they have the option.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion?
Okay, Mayor, just make one other comment about, I think if, as we move in this direction, it would be valuable for us to define what is appropriate and to what degree, because these can also be overused. And I appreciate the fact that you can segment it, whether it's emergency, non-emergency, or whatever. I think there is a value in really looking at what was the parameters that we as a city would believe that this should be used for, so that people don't take it for granted and start to, uh, pay less attention to it than we have in emergency that they, they miss along the way.
I couldn't agree more, Mr. Isbrand.
So once those parameters are set, the citizen can also select which ones they want to get. So if they don't want brush or bulk pickup notifications, they don't have to check the box. So they have the option to opt in or out.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, item six point eight, discussion and possible action on procedure for the sale of used street signs. Uh, you may have noticed on the, the edge area where on Banyan, uh, Mr. Isbrand and I worked together to pick a sign that we felt like identified all the aspects of Castle Hills, and we put a lot of detail, mostly, Mr. Isbrand. He put together a whole presentation with every aspect. Uh, but now that we've come to an agreement on the sign, uh, I think it's important that we implement that throughout the city. And that's going to be a part of the construction going forward. But I did think it was important that we give residents the opportunity to expedite that if they felt appropriate. And I use myself as an example. I would happily pay money to, uh, replace the sign on my street or in my area. But I wanted to make sure that we afforded that opportunity to all residents as, uh, they felt like they wanted to do that. So, uh, mentioned the idea to Mr. Rapley, and he has put together, uh, the framework for a plan to move forward. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and as you mentioned with these new street signs, we installed them in the, the last construction project. And as we move forward with the reconstructed streets and the drainage projects in those areas, we want to try to outfit the signs. Um, we would look at phasing the street, new street signs in, in certain areas. Um, we do have some dollars for these signs that are currently in the operating budget. Um, the particular vendor, um, who does these signs for city of San Antonio and other surrounding cities, uh, is working on giving me sort of an estimate and a price breakdown to replace signs as we move forward in phases, which I will bring back to council at some point. But ultimately, the idea is, um, you know, some of the street signs that we take down that are currently up and some that we kind of have in inventory right now, they're not even being used. Uh, the idea is if a, a citizen wanted to buy their particular street sign, used sign, that we could, you know, um, sell it to them at twenty dollars a sign. Um, I think those signs that we currently have, you see the green ones recently. I think the older brown ones, um, were at a cost of, uh, thirty dollars, forty dollars with the sign and brackets. Um, those were done through the Texas Department of Corrections. So, um, they came a little bit cheaper, um, on the labor side, uh, from that standpoint. But, uh, weren't as custom and weren't up to, um, I'd say, uh, the, the aesthetics and style for the new signs that we have ready to go. Again, the same vendor does San Antonio and other surrounding streets right now, uh, surrounding cities. And so this would just be a, a way to, to fray that as we move forward with replacing signs in the future. Um, and the other aspect of this, these signs may be a little more expensive, but, um, it would be a turnkey process because they would come out and install it for us. So our public works is, uh, not out installing signs all the time. We would call them to replace these signs when necessary. So it's a little bit of time-saving for our public works who need to be devoted on other, uh, projects in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Rapley, the, the twenty dollar, um, price on it, where did that come from? Um, what was your thought process on that? Because I'm, I'm wondering, I, I, I lived in another city where we went through exactly the same thing. And I think that, I, I don't want to suggest this is a huge revenue stream, but twenty dollars seems extremely affordable for something like this. I wonder what the thought process is.
I think just looking back on some of our purchase orders of signs that were currently, have been put up and the cost of those was sort of a, a good balance of, of, as far as, you know, the, there was some thought about ten or fifteen dollars, but it, it didn't seem like it covered the cost of the total price of what we paid for the existing sign. Um, I just thought that was a good, uh, range and number to use. Um, I, I, like I said, it's just to defray the costs. I wasn't looking to hopefully, um, get revenue to do the entire outfit and program of our new street signs. But also memento if citizens wanted to have their own street sign where they live, uh, even if it is used, um, or faded a little bit, at least they have a sign for their street, uh, moving forward. So I just thought twenty was a good number. Um, I know Mr. Schnall's not on the line, and I won't put Mr. Fletcher on, on the spot. But I talked to Mr. Schnall, and we kind of thought a good number was, was twenty dollars at this point.
Okay, so, thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Uh, one observation and one question. Mr. Mayor, did you think of this idea, or was this Mr. Rapley?
Uh, that was me.
Well, that's exactly the same idea I came up with eighteen years ago when we were replacing these signs. And we were asking ten dollars, and I'm afraid we didn't sell any, but I hope we sell them this time. I thought it was a good idea back then, but no one else bought anything.
Well, and I think there was a, you know, we, there's, it brings uniformity and consistency to our signs. We have some green ones. We have faded brown ones. Um, like Mr. Isbrand said, this kind of gives, um, a distinct idea of, hey, this is a branding. This is Castle Hills. You know you're in Castle Hills. And, um, I think when Rick had ordered some of these, he had kind of mentioned that TexDOT had said they got to be green or blue for first responders. And I kind of checked back with TexDOT, and of course, they were like, there's no mandate on that, uh, particularly. Um, but I think as we started in the Parks and Projects Commission a while back, there was some discussion of, of, of putting together a new street sign that would, again, bring that uniformity and consistency. Um, I can think of a number of cities I drive through that have the same street sign on every street in the community. Uh, and I think it's just a matter of appeal and distinctness. every street in the community, and I think it's just a matter of appeal and distinctness that you know you're in that particular spitty, especially because we're surrounded by San Antonio, you know? Some people may not know we're in Castle Hills, but if they see a sign that says City of Castle Hills on a brown sign, they know they're here versus a blue sign in San Antonio.
Well, I noticed all the signs on the, on Lock Hill, Selma, and this and that, Blanco were green. Have we committed to brown, which has been horrible for most people, they can't see the thing at night? Who have we committed to green, I mean, to brown?
Mr. Rappley, if I may?
Okay. Sorry.
And just because Mr. Isbrand and I worked on this pretty closely, almost every single detail of the sign blade has been scrutinized, even the color distinctly telling you that you're in the City of Castle Hills, just by looking at the color difference. And to your point, this sign is different than the correction sign in that it's higher grade and has reflective properties that are visible at night. If you go by the area in Banyan, you'll notice that it stands out much better than any other sign in the city. Obviously, it's a little bit more expensive, but we felt that that's the image of Castle Hills. And my hope is that we can present a united front image where everything is the same as opposed to having some that are in varying points of their life cycle. I, I don't know how successful the program will be, but I can tell you that I'll be making the first purchase for my area, so we'll at least sold two signs.
We're not replacing all the green signs that have gone up on Lock Hill, Selma.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you.
We're not, are we replacing all the green signs that have gone up on Lock Hill, Selma, and Blanco?
Those will eventually be replaced as well everywhere.
Those are new.
Well, I said as well, eventually. Everything that is in the City of Castle Hills should be the same way, and that's our intention. If the signs are new, they're going to be towards the end, because there's a lot of other signs that need to be taken care of immediately.
I would ask Chief and Chief, has there been any issues with first responders on any of the street signs in particular in Castle Hills?
Faded, yeah.
So, we have an idea where some of those really faded signs are, so we can start outfitting and replacing those. But eventually, the idea is, again, to have that distinct, uh, that distinct characteristic that you're on Castle Hills versus San Antonio on Lock Hill, eventually those signs will be replaced. And maybe at the point, someone will buy the sign for $20 and we'll replace it at some point, so.
I, I think it's important to show the area. When we were brought up the idea of the COVID vaccines at home, I had a lady reach out to me, and I, I sent her to Chief anyways, but she was by the medical center, and she said that she lived in Castle Hills. And I said, you know, we will do what we can to pass your information along, but that is not Castle Hills property, and I'm sure you all have experienced that as well. So, I think the idea of being able to show the difference as soon as you go to any corner is a, a good step for branding the city.
And as I mentioned in my summary here, ultimately, we'll want to get to a point to where we do have distinct illuminated signs at Northwest Military and West Avenue at some point.
Mr. Isbrand.
Based on, based on the affordability. Thank you.
Mayor, just for the context on this, I wanted to point out that the Parks and Projects Commission reviewed the, the, this, this to move it forward. In the course of the exercise, I think virtually every colored sign that you can think of, including purple, and all kinds of logos and iterations of it were, were evaluated, and this was where the Parks and Projects Commission netted out with the, the work that we brought forward. These signs, the difference with these signs and what you may look at now with the brown ones that are out there, is that since those are faded, and I don't even know how long some of those have been there, if they were ever really reflective to begin with, but if you look at the signs that are out there now, you'll see that they are reflective. So, they're going, they are visible at night. That was part of the exercise that we went through there. The intention here is, has been said, as you know, also, the Parks and Projects Commission is looking at monuments or entrance signs to the city, and the intention here would ultimately be for everything to come together with a uniform or consistent look. So, it does define not just the borders of the city, but the unique characteristics of the city too. And you can go to virtually any suburban city around here and see that the same kinds of things are taking place there as part of an effort to promote their cities and, again, the distinct characteristics of them.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, and thank you again for doing all the work to collaborate all the details.
Mayor, with that said, I would move approval of the, the proposal for the procedure of sale of used named street signs as outlined by Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. We have a motion by Mr. Isbrand.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. We will proceed on to item 6.9, Discussion and Possible Action on the Modification of the 2021 City Holiday Schedule Regarding the Battle of Flowers Parade, City Hall. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor. Just as we did last year when we first had the pandemic and things were canceling, especially Fiesta, just like last year and every year, we've had Battle of Flowers Parade. And just like last year, I brought it forward to Council to replace that with a floating holiday for an employee to use anytime in the year. I know Fiesta was moved, but Battle of Flowers is still canceled in June, so I want to give the employees an opportunity to have an extra floating holiday. When it does come here in about 10 days, it'll be a normal operating day for the city across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce?
I move that we accept the modification to the 2021 City Holiday Schedule Regarding the Battle of Flowers Parade, City Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Item 6.11, Discussion and Possible Action on the City's Emergency Preparedness, Planning and Response in the Event of Extreme Weather Including Severe Heat and Cold Conditions or Prolonged Emergencies. So, Mr. Isbrand? Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Isbrand and I are bringing this forth because of various reasons, but something is very interesting that happened today, I believe it was today, that there was an emergency alert of, of telling people to cut back on their energy consumption, because it may have burnouts if we don't have it. We're in April, and I think that occurred this week. It's upon us sooner than we think, the, the hot weather. And I think the City Council should set up a committee, Mr. Isbrand and I would love to serve if you want us to serve, along with the City Manager, to bring together as quickly as possible recommendations from all the departments, as well as recommendations that are non-departmental. We've had one major emergency in this city before, that was the Wedgewood problem, and that brought out a lot of flaws of what needed to be done administratively, it was politically. So, this is basically to hasten the attempt to be prepared when the hot weather comes very soon with a clear, defined set of recommendations, all of them in a bunch, and that Mr. Rappley and two members of this committee could share from the Council and present to the committee for their, for their recommendations. Therefore, I propose that we adopt Section 6.1.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Was that a motion, or?
Yeah, well, let me get to the right page here.
I think, Mr. Fletcher, you may have to clarify if you're asking to establish a Council Committee on this?
Yes. I propose to have a committee of two council members and the City Manager to make it the City's Emergency Preparedness and Planning and Response Committee to bring proposals back to the City Council in very short order, hopefully within two months or less, that the Council can see as a whole of things that would help improve the city to respond to weather emergencies.
Okay. We have a motion, Mr. Gregory? Do we have a second? All second. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have discussion? Mr. Isbrand?
The, the reason that this item that Mr. Gregory and I had talked about caught my attention was a couple of things. I think we've done some really good work since the freeze, we survived the freeze, and we've done some really good work since then in addressing what we see as immediate needs. Okay, we need a generator, let's get that. We, we have now approved a more effective communication system, but I think the intention here would be to have a more holistic view of the city's capabilities in the event of any kind of prolonged emergency. And as Mr. Gregory said, you know, we can, you know, hot weather is around the corner, ERCOT today is telling people to conserve. It would, what I think the intention would be is for the three members, Mr. Rappley and two council members, would be, again, to do an assessment, a inventory, and bring all that as one concise document or piece of work to the Council, so that we can look at it holistically. Because beyond planning for, do we have COTS? Do we have capabilities for air conditioning, et cetera, et cetera, whatever the case may be, are also the budget implications of it. So, being able to look at this in a broader realm, I think, would be helpful to us as we go into the next planning, the planning for the next budget year as well, and what can we afford to do? How do we prioritize it? And how do we ensure that we have an emergency operations plan that basically is, you know, if you will, the book on the shelf you can pull out, you know, what you're supposed to do, everything that's been thought about along the way, et cetera. So, that would be the intention of doing this, this project.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. So, are there any further comments, Council? Okay. So, this actually came up in the Projects Committee, was that correct, Ryan? The, this, the idea of a emergency preparation committee came up during the Parks and Projects Ad Hoc Committee?
They, they did have a discussion on it. I think there was elements brought forward about generator and other aspects. I don't know if it was decided to have a, say, Council Committee, but there was a discussion about putting an emergency plan together in some sorts with Mr. McCormick, I believe.
Yes, sir. So, this conversation had came up there, and I think I mentioned it previous, in the previous month, but the City, the Red Cross for South Central Texas has agreed to help us tailor a emergency response plan for cities. Now, that's not something they typically do, but they have pre-assigned modules that we can go and pick from, that we can develop one, and the goal, at least my hope, was that we could work with the Red Cross to develop a plan for cities and be able to share that with the other cities throughout Bear County, the 25 other suburban cities that exist, and to help them not have to go through all the work that we did. That being said, the Red Cross is excited to jump on this, they're just waiting, because they have everything focused on their Sound the Alarm Vent, which is coming up here shortly. So, once we get past that, they're ready to go all hands on deck and help us. They have agreed to provide us with, I think, 30 more COTS, was that right, Chief? 30 more COTS and potentially hygiene kits as well for us to store in advance for any kind of emergency that did come up. And, you know, once we get into the plan, we can identify some other additional needs that may come up as well. I'm happy to bring that aspect of my plan into this committee if you all are willing to have it.
Mayor, my comment would be on this, that this certainly does not preclude us working with Red Cross, or Bear County, or CPS, or SAWs, or the State of Texas, or anybody. I think the more expertise we can bring to this, the better off we will be. I think this is an exercise of doing a self-assessment of what we believe we need that may be unique to the city, may not be, and maybe something Red Cross or others could apply elsewhere. But I think as a starting point, perhaps, it would be helpful to whomever we want to work with, other organizations or government entities, for us to be able to say, when we looked at our situation, this is what we saw. We see buildings that don't have generators, we see the inability to ensure a consistent water supply, et cetera, et cetera, that might help to guide that. So, this is not intended to, by any means, circumvent or discourage any other participation, but simply for us to, we have not since the freeze really done a centralized assessment of what we went through, what we need, what we learned from it, and how that might be applied to hot weather as well. And I think the more knowledge that we could bring early on to this, the more it would probably help any partner agencies to do a more effective job for us, in fact. So, I would, I would hope that this would all fit nicely together.
Perfect. Do we have any other comments, questions, discussion? Mr. Paul, anything?
No.
Okay. That.
Mayor, real quick, I, I would ask the Fire Chief, Chief, is there anything? I, I know if there's a Council Committee engaging the Mayor at one point or any point as the Mayor, it's Emergency Management Operator, could you elaborate on that, or is that?
Correct. As, as the Mayor, he's the Emergency Management Director for the city. So, anything that we do in that aspect is up to him to a point. Initially, and I talked with Bear County today, since we are blanketed under their Emergency Management Coordinator, who's Chief Lopez right now, they encourage us to do exactly what we're going to be doing in doing the preparedness and working out a plan. Now, we do have a plan in place with the Texas Department of Emergency Management and all of the annexes from A through U that describes a lot of the things that we're going to be talking about, but of course, it needs to be reviewed and discussed, and also visiting on those different things, the interlocal agreements with either vendors, contractors, other cities, other fire departments, and so forth. So, I'd be more than happy, once we get the committees together and we start looking at this, to bring out the plans that we have currently for Castle Hills, also the county plan as far as what they offer as far as assistance because of us being blanketed under their, their guidance. Because I did have a meeting with Chief Lopez and also Michael Moreland, who's also in Emergency Management Department, in discussing what type of assistance that they provide. But of course, like anything else with emergency management, they would like you to prepare yourself as much as you possibly can, and then when it exceeds our capabilities, they'll be right there to assist us with what we need.
And then a side note, I will be nominating Chief Ludwig to assist me on that preparation side, staff side.
I think it would be our expectation, definitely.
Thank you, maybe.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, we have a motion on the table, we have a second. All in favor? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone? And that was unanimous.
This has to pass before you can nominate anybody.
Yes.
So, it's a two-step progress.
So, I think we have two, two gentlemen that are interested, and we can build a committee from there. That is all we have for this evening. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, Council, I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Chief Ludwig and Angela DiPaolo at Legends Pharmacy. Together, they have done a remarkable job of, and with help from the, the Women's Club too, in, in identifying them, but have done a remarkable job of reaching out to our senior population to ensure that they have access to the COVID-19 vaccinations. I know that the efforts that they've done, and Chief, I look particularly at you as I say this, is very time-consuming, and I'm very grateful for the diligence and the commitment that you've made, that Legends Pharmacy has as a well-respected Castle Hills business. I think it's just a real testament to how government and business can work well together, and I, I thank them for their assistance. Thank you, Chief, for everything that you're doing to lead this.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
No, thank you.
Mr. May?
Just three things. First of all, in the Castle Hills Historical Society Department, our first in-person meeting will be at 6:30 tomorrow night, Wednesday, right here. It'll be socially distanced, mask. All members of the Working Committee of 12 have been invited, but this is open to anyone in the community, and I'll do a social posting tomorrow. Secondly, the Castle Hills Business Association continues its work. Our working group of six met a week ago, led by Councilman Joyce, and on the drawing board is a meeting that is going to be more than just a meeting, it's going to be fun, and it's going to be a social event, getting all Castle Hills businesses engaged. That will occur prior to the June 19 Fiesta. getting all Castle Hills businesses engaged. That will occur prior to the June 19 Fiesta, and we hope that will be a launching pad to do some collaborative work. And finally, thank you, Councilman Isbrand, for letting me know that the earlier planned cleanup weekend was going to be Easter, and we avoided that debacle. So we are now working with citizens for April 24th, Saturday, April 24th. It'll be a two-to-three-hour event, meeting at the Commons. Details will be coming out shortly, likely start time about nine or 10.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'd just like to make a few comments about the effort underway for the comprehensive plan. That is well underway. We have a committee of nine working on it. I am, of course, the liaison to the committee. And next month, I'm pleased to say that Ms. McLean, who is the chair of the committee, will be bringing an update to Council. And among the points she's going to talk about will be a review of the process and schedule that we got proposed, a summary of the survey results, recommendation for the incorporation of a planning consultant to the team, and finally, a review of major topics to be examined. And the current efforts, we're still working on that survey data. I know I talked about that last month. The Survey Monkey does a real good job with the yes-no answers and the one-to-10 answers, and that's easy enough. But what's going to take us, we're discovering a little bit of time, is the analysis of the written answers. Because, you know, we got a tremendous response, folks. I think we got 240 out of 1,760 responses, which is terrific. And so we're really excited about that. But some of these responses, written responses, have over 200 things that we have to analyze. So, but anyway, we've gone through a couple, and just to let you know, the, the question that we asked about, what do you most like about Castle Hills, and I'll just mention the top three at this point. The first one, probably not a surprise, but the trees, the country feel, the rural atmosphere of our city received 92 responses. The public services, police, fire, sanitation, received 54 responses. That came in second. And third, the large lots with 48 responses. And there were many others, and we'll develop a top 10 or something, I guess. But anyway, that analysis is still going on. We're planning as part of the process to do a speakers forum, probably in the June and July timeframe, where we intend for those to be more educational. We'll bring folks in from the outside and also from in Castle Hills, too. We have a lot of talent here. We'll address such topics as economic development, transportation, green space, and sustainability, and others, and we'll have subject matter experts to help us with that. And anyway, we're, finally, then, just to, I'm probably going on too long, but we are developing also a group of volunteers to help get the word out. Just some, some neighbors from each of the six neighborhoods to help us get the word out and let folks know when the workshops are going to be taking place, when the speakers forums are going to taking place. So we're still getting organized and having fun, and look forward to you bringing to you next month a kind of a summary of where we are at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
Okay, I have a couple of quick points. I wanted to congratulate Chief Zuniga again, and congratulate him on his first meeting as chief. Early voting is starting next Friday, is that correct, Mr. Rappley? The already 19th, wow. Okay, so make sure that you make plans to vote. I also want to congratulate the city on going digital. As you may or may not know, there is a lot of documentation that goes into our council packets, and that's a lot of time for staff to put together and a lot of paperwork. And the majority of council has gone paperless, so we're helping staff and helping the environment at the same time. And lastly, I did want to thank Mr. Isbrand for being instrumental, and Chief, for being able to provide the vaccine both at home and at the city. Aside from the City of San Antonio, I don't know of any other city in or around the area that has been able to offer that service. And in my mind, that's the difference between Castle Hills and the rest. That being said.
Real quick, I just want to make sure Council was aware of just a couple of things. I sent an email earlier this afternoon on, on the brush bag leaf collection. So we're working on a plan within Public Works and possibly, and we believe there's an abundance of foliage that, you know, was a result of the storm, that I'm working on to maybe bring someone from the outside to help get some collection done quick, help out our public work staff, who's a little understaffed right now, so we can take care of this, this problem for the residents. With that, if anyone has any concerns, please let us know here at City Hall. We'll definitely get them addressed as quick as possible. But we apologize for any inconvenience. And then just a reminder, we're going to have a special City Council meeting on April 22nd with a couple items on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a first, and Mr. May?
Second.
People, okay, Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Meeting, it's 8:16, meeting is adjourned.
It was a bridge too far.